Good afternoon. It is Monday, October 18th, 2021. It is 4:00 PM and we're going to call to order the study session for the Ottawa City Commission. As we do with every meeting, we start our meeting with public comment. I understand that we may have public comment today.
We do. We have Diane Coates.
All right. Diane, would you like to come up and have a conversation with us? I'm going to read a paragraph so that you and anybody else who gives public comment today or any other meeting will know what the restrictions are. So, "Subject to the above restrictions, persons who wish to address the Ottawa City Commission regarding items on the agenda may do so as that agenda item is called. Persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items not on the agenda and are under the jurisdiction of the City Commission may do so at the time when they are called upon by the mayor. Comments on personal matters and matters pending in court or other outside tribunals are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes and any presentation is for information purposes only. The governing body will take comments under advisement." Diane, we'd like to hear from you. Tell us who you are and where you're from.
Okay, well, I am here again. I guess I don't expect you to remember me, but in August, I came before you all in an issue that we have with the city ordinance, weeds, the so-called, what I feel harassment from the city, not you people. And I'm back. And I think I spoke to Wendy Lee and sent her more pictures of the property. And I guess I just want to, real fast here, show you, because I think I misrepresented. And I have a good way of doing that. I don't know if, I told you last time that I suffer from a brain injury and so sometimes I do not get things across very well. But, this mayor. I tried to explain this to you last time and I don't think, because you said that you go by, but I know for a fact that nobody drives down where I'm talking about. This is my house. I'm going to turn this way. Sorry, it's upside down. This is my house, right down the street at 104. This is First Street. This is Elm Street. This is the street that I'm talking about here. I know you guys drive down this way, you say, because you drive that way all the time, straight on down. What I'm trying to get at is, when you come to Elm Street, to turn right, and these are your properties right here, this is the street Pontiac, down here. Nobody goes down there. In fact, the street, the road is actually abandoned. You can tell by where we drive into our driveway. I, you know, all I've wanted to do here is just live and, you know, we're taxpayers. We own our home here. I'm getting to the point where I just really don't even want to own a home here anymore. We've tried several times to speak with Wendy Lee. In fact, you guys referred me to her. We went out in the hallway and she sent me a message the next day stating that the city workers drove by this property and said that it was looked at, and that it was mowed. But see, that's not, that's just not the issue. The issue is, we have been given a ticket, or I should say, charged for a piece of property at 834 that my son owns and that I am, I just own with him, kind of with him, I guess. I don't know what the right word is, brain injury, sorry. But I would like to show you this picture. This is the picture of how it looked, please, when it was mowed by the city. Across the street from us at 104, to this very day, a month and almost a half later, this is my, and just mind you, I don't know if you're aware of the weeds. And I apologize for this, because I don't know what my printer did, but the law here is 12 inches for weeds and grass. This are pictures that I have taken across the street today. There is a little ruler there. I'm sorry, it's in here, you can't see it. That is across the street from us today, on the city property.
Okay, so, Mrs. Coates, I appreciate you being here. I guess, can you get to what it is that you would like the City Commission to know about? We're talking about two different properties here, because it appears as though you've shown us a map of First and Elm, however, it appears as though you're talking about a property on, I don't know if it's 834 Cherry.
Yes. I am talking about double standards here. And I looked up what City Council is responsible for. And part of it, I mean, part of what you guys do is listen to people like me. I'm a taxpayer. I'm paying good taxes for our property. And over the last 10 years that I've lived here, we have been harassed. And I'm going to use the word harass. I have contacted a couple of attorneys that I am going to speak to. And the reason why is this. You guys are in charge of the ordinances. You guys can vote on them and you can do what you want. You're in charge of, you know, the help and everything else. And what's going on is a great injustice. What sent me over the edge was, we were over at our house at 834 North Cherry, where Wendy Lee and them charged us, as I put in these papers, charged us for mowing a yard that looks just like the property across my street that the city owns. And yet, she told me last time, "I can't go over there and cut it and charge you guys." But yeah, I can't get anybody to cut it either. I mean, if you guys write this ordinance up, it's not just good for us, it's good for the city too. It's good for everybody involved. Don't you agree? I mean, seriously, it is. But what really sent me over and what really made me decide to go and find an attorney, and I am not directing it towards any one of you guys, I am not directing it towards you, mayor. I'm not directing it towards anybody in this council meeting. I just want you to know, this is what I'm doing and this is why. Because I went over to 834 and we went in the back and we cleaned up and we did all this other stuff. And I looked in the neighbor's yard right behind me, right behind 834, right behind. And this is what I find. I have a son who is six foot three, six foot three, and weeds don't grow past six foot three in a two-week period of time. They just don't. This is so-
Gone on long enough.
The, in fact, I actually went and talked to the neighbor behind there. I'm sorry, because I just felt like crying too, because I really wanted to be here. I mean, I really want to be here without being harassed. And yet, I went behind and talked to this neighbor. Not once has he heard from anybody about those weeds, not once. But he did tell me about how, what's the gentleman's name, Wendy?
We're going to-
Oscar Taylor.
We're going to ask you to probably wrap up your comments. I understand what you're saying here, but we also, our limit is three minutes and we have 10 minutes, we're 10 minutes in. And so, and I appreciate what you're saying, however, and I appreciate that you're frustrated. I hear frustration in your voice. And I hear that you, what I also hear you say is that you're a taxpayer, we appreciate that. We all here are taxpayers. And that you feel like that the property located at 834 North Cherry may be something you don't feel as though it's being fairly treated. Is that, is that a fair summary?
No.
Okay.
What I'm trying to tell you is that Oscar Taylor, Wendy Lee, and the whole bunch there are double standards. You cannot allow a property across the street from me that you guys own grow to pass the ordinance and then go over to my place, which looks exactly the same, and give me a tick or give me a citation for it. That's double standards. That's harassment. That's what I'm talking about. These are just pictures. I would like, I need my pictures back for my attorney, but these are just pictures. And part, I'm sorry for the three minutes, but part of the City Council is to help me with my problem.
So that, so the individuals who may be listening, and we do closed captioning, so we always ask you to be by the microphone so that anybody who may be hearing impaired, so that our closed captioner could certainly get those. And so, please know that you just, if you can stay by the microphone, just so we can make sure anybody who's hearing impaired can-
I apologize. I said, "Part of the City Commissioner's job, all of you, is to help me with my problem." That's what you're there for. And if I go over three minutes, I apologize. But this is an issue. I've been here before. This is an issue. I have neighbors that are going to testify for me, that you guys have allowed this property to go untaken care of for, I mean, I've been living here for eight years and it's been longer than that.
It appears as though, you continue to tell us that you may have already retained an attorney and-
No, I said I'm looking for one. I do not have one. I am looking for one. But you know what? This is my last stop. I want to know, what is somebody going to do?
The, public comment is strictly for presentation and information only. If you would like to get together with Mrs. Lee or talk to our city manager about how it is that we can actually have a presentation and discussion about this, we can certainly do that. But this is, public comment is not the place to have that venue, to have that back and forth conversation.
But City Council is.
That is absolutely correct. You have asked to be under public comment.
Where would, when would you like for me to show up that I can talk to all of you about this?
What we're asking you to do is to meet with our Building and Codes Department, Community Development, Mrs. Lee. And if that doesn't solve it, then you'll need to meet with our city manager so that we can figure out what it is that you would like to be put onto the agenda regarding.
She has, she sent me an email stating that she showed pictures to the City Council. I mean, not City Council, city manager and everything. You told me to go out and talk to her and I did. Did anything get done? No. Now, what do I need to do?
And I appreciate the fact, what you're saying. The city manager and I actually have driven by, and because we drove by in the same car after the last time you were here. I actually drove by twice again after that.
You went down Elm Street to Pontiac?
Yes, ma'am.
Then why hasn't nothing done?
So, I mean, I do believe that people actually are looking to see what is going on here. I'm going to ask you again, please, just meet with Mrs. Lee. If that doesn't solve it, then you'll need to meet with our city manager so that we can figure out what needs to be put on our agenda.
Okay. You're brushing me off.
No, I'm not brushing you off, ma'am. I'm just saying that you've asked for being for public comment.
I did that. I did that last time. You sent me out in the hall and I talked to the both of them. Was it not the other gentleman? Oh, it's not a meeting. It was a conversation in the hallway. Okay, did anything get done? Did it get mowed? Did it get, the leaves?
I would implore you to please make an appointment with either Building and Codes or our Community Development Department. If you'd like, you can certainly make that appointment with our city manager too, to talk about how it is that we can get to resolution. But right now, we're in the middle of public comment and we appreciate your public comment. And generally, what happens is when we take that public comment, we take that for information purposes only and then we're going to see what we can do about getting our staff to help us work through that issue.
Okay, and that's what you did last time I was here?
I don't, I don't know that, I mean, we ask you to advise with Mrs. Lee about this.
But I thought you just said that after you take what I say, you discuss it and you go further with that?
No, no.
But nothing was with-
A presentation is for information purposes only.
Okay. All right. See, because what I feel like you're telling me is that I have no other options but to go hire an attorney, because I've already spoken to her. I've spoken to her. Wendy Lee, have I not spoken to you about the driveway?
You have the right to do whatever you'd like. What I'm saying is, is that we're in the middle of public comment and public comment as the paragraph reads. And that's why we say it every single time. Comments on personal matters and matters pending in court or within other tribunals are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes and any presentation is for information purposes only.
Then I'm asking you to please tell me, when would be a good time to meet with all of you again to discuss what's going on? Because that is part of the City Council meeting. That is part of the City Council is to discuss these things with individuals that live here, that pay the taxes, which hires you guys.
What we're asking you to do is to please-
I know what you're asking me to do.
Okay, great.
Sit down and talk to her or-
Have a conversation with this, yes, with our staff. That is exactly what we're asking you to do.
But I'm here because it's not working, so tell me now what to do.
I would say that you need to schedule a meeting with our city manager.
Okay, okay.
Here's some, here's some of the pictures you presented.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Thank you. I am really saddened. I am.
I'm sorry. We're sorry you're sad. Next, that moves us on to items to be placed on our regular City Commission agenda. And under that are minutes from our study session on the 27th of September, our October 4th meeting, our October 6th meeting. Commissioners, have you had a chance to review those meeting minutes?
Yes.
Is there anything you'd like to change, delete, anything, any reason why we don't move that on to the agenda? All right, we shall do so. Next, a proclamation recognizing October 17th through the 23rd as National Friends of the Library Week. Commissioners, did you have a chance to review that? Is there a consensus to place that on the agenda?
Yes.
All right, we shall do so. Next, that moves us on to continued discussion about the TIFF project at 19th and Princeton. Mrs. Lee, would you like to address this matter?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So we have two TIFF projects. We started this conversation a couple of weeks back and since then, we've had the feasibility completed. The Planning Commission has met and the Economic Development Review Committee has met. And so to bring you back up to date, the 19th and Princeton project, in that TIFF district, we have 201,000 and some change on hand that would be available towards the proposed sidewalk as our first initial project. That estimate was 276,000 and change. But the plan is really to do, to take the money that is in that TIFF district from those specific parcels and reinvest it in the land adjacent to them. And so, over time, this morning, when we discussed it with the Economic Review Committee, for example, we put in the sidewalk in this first stage, but at some point, it'd be appropriate to push-button signals at 21st Street Terrace, both directions, to help people get across, as well as the deceleration lane and the turn lanes around Worschland and the bank and the dental office over time. So if you've been through the feasibility, you'll see that there is sufficient funds that would be delivered. When you were, start the project, that's a different thing. But this would just create the project, well, actually, what we're asking for you to do today is actually call a public hearing to adopt a project plan. So that's what we're really doing today. The hearing would be December 15th at the 10 o'clock time. And at that time, we'd probably go through all of it again to talk about the eligible parts of the project plan and what they could cover. But happy to answer any questions.
So Wendy, you were talking about the stoplights, push-button. What was that again, to propose?
So, so we're proposing to add sidewalks. But one of the things we've found as we've looked at intersections around the community is that really to enhance a people's ability to cross multiple lanes of traffic, which right now, there's no sidewalks in this area. So there would have been no reason to put in a push-button demand for those signals to change. But over time, that would be another eligible expense.
And those sidewalks begin, they're at Price Chopper or-
Right, at the south edge of the Price Chopper, on both the east and west side of their side, the sidewalks terminate. And this would allow them to continue, go all the way down to 21st Street Terrace and circle back up.
Mrs. Lee, I've had a couple people ask me, "How are we raising their taxes again?" Because I don't think they understand TIFF. So can you explain it, just so it's a little easier to understand? Because we're not raising taxes for anything like this. This is, it's not, like it even says in here, it's not going to capture any local sales or use taxes. That these, this tax increment finance district is based upon property values, the increase in property values.
These four parcels have had, have been in a TIFF district since before the Price Chopper was built. Every year, their taxes are collected. There has been increment created from those four parcels that would be redirected back to the adjacent infrastructure of those four parcels. It has nothing to do with any other parcels in town. I had somebody call and say, "Why couldn't we take that money and put it somewhere else?" And I said, "We cannot. That's not what the law allows." We can either use the money in this district or we turn it back to the entities that have participated in, and that would be the City County School District.
You might explain when that is satisfied and those taxes are no longer usable or collected for TIFF.
So as, the TIFF district is set out for, well, Tyler's on the phone. Tyler, why don't you go ahead and tell them the timing on this? Because we had a question on that earlier today, actually, as well.
Good afternoon, everyone. Tyler Ellsworth with Q-Tech Rock Cities Bond Council. With respect to the timing of collection of the property tax revenues that, as Mrs. Lee mentioned, are redirected to pay for costs of projects in the TIFF district, the district itself, which is comprised of the Price Chopper property and those properties south, as she mentioned. The district-wide property tax revenues and associated TIFF increment are collected as long as there's an active TIFF project in the district. So there are two project areas. The Price Chopper project is one, that's about the north half of the district. That tax increment can be generated for up to 20 years from the start of that project, which was in 2014. We've limited that collection to a shorter period than 20 years. That project will still be going on and if the Commission approves this southern TIFF project in December, following a public hearing, then those tax increment revenues from those property taxes can run for 20 years as well. So at the end of the 20-year period, that would start potentially this December, then all the projects in that TIFF district would be complete. And at that point, or sooner, as late as 20 years from now, but potentially sooner than 20 years from now, the taxes would stop being redirected for project costs and would begin flowing back to the county, the city and the school district.
So it's not related to a dollar amount that's spent on the properties in its total years?
With the Price Chopper project, that was specific in that development agreement with a cap in both term, the time, and dollars, yes. But at the end of that term, should you, for example, want to resurface 19th Street? You could, you could do that with the remaining funds, once they've been paid back. But let's say we do the sidewalk and then we decide we're going to do some works right there with those A cells, D cells and those turns to try and keep people from going the wrong direction on Princeton. And we do the push-button signal and then the governing body decides, along with staff, there really isn't any needed infrastructure down here any further. We don't need to resurface Princeton. We don't need to resurface 21st Street Terrace. If you were to conclude there was no need for additional infrastructure, then we would just, we could close the district out earlier. I suspect you're going to want to take advantage of trying to get those surfaces redone at some point in order to save them from your street fund. But if you elected instead for it to turn back, that is your call.
Other questions for Mrs. Lee regarding this project? So, anybody else? Question?
Some, Madam Mayor, I failed to finish with. The Planning Commission did pass a resolution that indicated they felt like this project was in conformance with the conference plan. They asked some additional questions about sidewalks and connections in the general area and what other TIFF projects could do to enhance the overall objectives in that way. And then this morning, the Economic Development Review Committee met and they were comfortable with proceeding to a hearing as well.
So what you're asking us today, Mrs. Lee, is to call a public hearing for the December 15th meeting in which that we will discuss and take public comment regarding the tax increment financing project at 19th and Princeton. Is that correct?
Yes, to place the agenda on your action agenda. Yes, please.
Commissioners, is there any objection to the request? All right, we shall call that public hearing for December 15th then. I believe that moves us on to the next item on our agenda, which is the discussion of the Premier Auto Plan in the South 59 TIFF district. So we're going to continue to talk about TIFF districts, but a different TIFF district. Mrs. Lee, what do you have to tell us?
Yes, so this is both a different TIFF district and a different TIFF project. This TIFF district was the first TIFF district that we created in South 59 and was initially for the Loves Project. Since then, we've also done a project plan for the Ford area. So this would be our third project within that very large. It's the largest district that we have. We also, you'll recall, a couple of years ago, annexed some additional parcels into this district to expand it just a bit. The Premier Auto Project Plan has to do with property that is north of I-35. It is east of the former Ford project by several parcels. But it would support not only there, they've requested funds and we haven't yet done our development agreement, so we don't know fully how much. But certainly, the fund, the feasibility does illustrate that it has the capacity to meet the requests. But as you know, we often go through that process with them when we're doing a development agreement and talk about what they really need, not just what else is eligible. So we're still in that part of the process. However, the feasibility does show that there's capacity. In addition to that, as I shared with you last time, there are funds in the South 59 district as well. And after visiting with Tyler last week, I had already indicated to you we were going to do some adjacent sidewalks in order for the sidewalk on the project to be extended at least to Oak. Visited with the Public Works Director and Tyler, and actually, our proposal would be to take that sidewalk concurrently here, at the same time, all the way over to Princeton. Those are the only, right now, that's the only infrastructure planned. At the same time, we've been looking at the roadway, we're looking at some design, possible work or at least investigation with the bridge as well. But again, this is for the funds that are being generated within that district to go right back into the district. It does not affect any other property owners. And it is a way for the City County and School District to help a redevelopment district really make those turns so that those funds are reinvested right there where they are trying to do a project. This has proven to be very helpful for us in a number of our economic development incentives. Last time, you got a letter from our Economic Development Director, Paul Bean. This time, we also have a resolution passed by the Planning Commission that found that this project was in conformance with the conference of plan. And this morning, when the committee met, they too recommended that we move forward to call a public hearing on this item. Typically, at that hearing, we would also have the development agreement and any other incentives. We try to, when we're working with a specific project, have all those items on the same meeting.
Commissioners, do you have questions? Commissioners, do you have questions for Mrs. Lee regarding this project? This exciting project, certainly.
Mrs. Lee, just real, one quick one. At the second paragraph of your letter to us, it said, in all TIF districts, I'm sorry, page 30. In all TIF districts and projects, there's a review committee. I'm assuming that's the Economic Development Committee?
Right.
Okay. And what's, not who, but what's that committee comprised of, like?
The superintendent of the School District, the county administrator, the county clerk, the city clerk, the city manager, the, the city public works director, the city utility director, economic development director, myself, did I, city finance director and the city attorney.
Wide variety.
Yes. And they met before, we brought it to you the first time and then met again this morning and we're comfortable recommending it. But yes, the goal is, is to help represent those other taxing entities. That's not done in a lot of communities, but certainly speaks well to having a clear, transparent conversation about the projects.
I agree. Thank you.
Excuse me. The, and this is bare land and so everything above the taxes on that land now would be TIF, would be taxes paid that would go back into the property. Is that?
So.
Is that correct? Or is there, there are things that TIF cannot be used for, if I understand that correctly, like a building?
Yes, both are, both statements are correct. Anything that were, regardless of a project or not, anything that were to be built there, would, those funds would go back into the district. In this case, the project, the area, the project has asked for those funds to be, help them as they navigate the infrastructure needed to do a development. And so they've made a request for a certain amount. We haven't yet determined what amount would be workable in the development agreement, but we certainly have now an available number. They are refining some infrastructure expenses now. And so what we had was their preliminary application, they've been doing their subdivision work with us as well as their engineering design. And we're continuing to work through that now, so that's why they don't have final numbers. And the second question was?
Well, there are things that TIF can't be used for.
Oh, what can it pay for, that's right. The tax increment finance dollars are for grading, site work, can be acquisition and infrastructure, no private improvements.
So there is a gain for, for the construction of the project. What I'm trying to get at is, these things, 90% of the time wouldn't happen if they didn't have kind of this kind of a help of TIF. But the city still has a gain from the investor or the owner investing in things that are taxable and also go to the City County and School District.
Yes, that's, that's a fair statement.
90% of the time, things of this nature, millions of dollars of investment to be created and to be invested in have to have some help on infrastructure and some of the deals that make it work. It wouldn't work without it and so we get, we give and we get.
That's right. The feasibility indicates that the project area, which is a fairly small area of this whole TIF district, would generate over $3 million over the 20-year time period. They've asked for 2.75 of that, so there to be capacity. Our feasibility, our analysts indicates that probably to treat them fair compared to other parcels, that number would not need to be that high. But it certainly does, does indicate that there is some need for that incentive in order for the project to happen. So it's somewhere in the middle, I guess is. What usually happens when we do these is there's a guesstimate at the beginning, certainly they're still creating their estimates. And we created an estimate now on the revenue and then we come to what is our middle ground that we hope that you would agree with in December, as far as what the actual development agreement will say.
And they still have to pay their taxes and we just?
They pay their taxes every, every time or else they get no increment. That's right. And in fact, if they, if they pause even, that'll suspend them from the, from the ability to have increment.
Then I might add on the periphery, there's jobs being created, there's sales tax being collected on this facility. I think there's just everything green, it all sounds good to me on this, but now will you have to have a hearing on this one as well?
Yes, sir. So it's over 24 jobs, just so the public is good. And the sales tax is not included, that's not a part of our policy. So that's right. And on this kind of a development with auto sales, that can be significant additional dollars to the area.
And I'm assuming some of this infrastructure that the TIF's paying for is not only benefiting them, but could possibly benefit future projects?
That's correct, because they are extending some utility infrastructure and certainly already mentioned to you the sidewalks. Ultimately, if you recall, we want to have sidewalks go all the way to the industrial park. So that would put us about halfway towards Montana. So that in itself is a benefit to the wider community.
So you are requesting that we call a public hearing for December 15th, 2021?
Yes, to place the resolution on your action agenda to call that hearing for December 15th, just as we did with the previous item.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Commissioners, do you have any additional questions for Mrs. Lee regarding her request on the premier auto plan?
The only comment I'd have is, don't we most time have public hearings in the evening meeting, which would be the December 1st? Is that too soon, I guess?
Well, we could just barely make it, but you already have six public hearings for condemnation that night. And so we, we actually talked with the applicant about not doing them all in the same.
I don't want to go, I don't go beyond the next day.
Yes.
Yeah, my bedtime's 10 o'clock, so we're not going to go that much, all right.
And you know, it could have been a short night, but we just visited with them and they were comfortable with the day meeting as well.
This is fine. Good point, yep.
Commissioners, are there any other questions regarding the request to put a public hearing on for the premier auto plan, TIF district proposal for the 15th? We shall do so. Thank you, Mrs. Lee. The next item on our agenda is going to bring Mr. Tharp to the microphone and he will be discussing a private sewer line that he is requesting that we purchase.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. What you have before you is an attempt, an ongoing attempt for us to pick up anything in our annexed area that is not infrastructure, that does not currently belong to the city. This particular sewer line was put in back before the area at Bennett and Wilson was annexed into the city. We have been in negotiations with Mr. Kilo, who originally put this line in to acquire this line and become a part of our system. This truly is an opportunity. We've only got about three or four of these left out there. And us owning them is a benefit to the city. To the end that we know they're taken care of and that, that they have been designed and everything works like we need it to work for our purposes. The price is never a little dollar when we start talking infrastructure. As you can see in the contract, we have negotiated a $125,000 price for this, this sewer line. And with estimates from our engineers and from the due diligence that we have done, we have not only potholed to make sure where these, this line was, so that we were sure that we were in the right of way, but we have camered this line from both ends as far as we could through to make sure that the line was in good shape. We've done what we could to physically examine the pumps at the lift station. Everything seems to be in good order at this point. And our recommendation is, with the contract that has been vetted through our city attorney, our city manager and myself, that we move forward with, with purchasing this line.
Dennis, what would this cost if we were to build this today? Do you have any idea?
Well, we, we believe, and an engineer's estimate is typically a little high, I'll be the first to admit that, but we believe it would be about, about $100,000 more than what we're looking at here.
Remind me again when this was built?
I can't tell you that. I don't think anybody knows, quite honestly. When this was first built, it went clear to Davis Road, when the coves were built. Then they, they abandoned part of this line and, and connected it to a, a manhole that was in the infrastructure in the coves. But we don't have record, we were able to find some records in the county, but all of it was centered around the coves when it was platted. And we couldn't find record before that of anything that had been done. So honestly, I can't tell you when it was done and Bo doesn't remember.
So, and if we were to acquire this, we're essentially going to acquire every, all, all street traffic to almost I-35. Right, I mean, it doesn't go any further than that.
This, this only encompasses, what is the salvage yard there at Bennett and Wilson or East Wilson?
There's nothing extending it, there's not a part of the road, we don't go to just part of the road, we're going to the end of the road, right?
We go to the end of Wilson, which encompasses Pinnacle also. Yes.
The manufacturer, the trust manufacturer, the one that had the fire, they're not on it?
They are on this, yes. Yes. And the other, the other reason that this makes sense is, we are working right now, been working with the rural water district to take over water in this particular area. And not to get too far in the weeds, because negotiations really haven't even started. But at some point in time, we will likely have negotiation to take over Bennett Road, which is now a private road. And so what we're talking about here makes sense as we look into the future and the things that likely will happen as, as we move forward.
What do you anticipate this $125,000, where would that money come from?
We have money in reserve at this point in time. And talking to our finance director, she believes that, that our best option is to, to take money from reserves and just pay for this.
There will be some income. He's charging those who are using it now?
We're charging those that are using it now, so the income won't change.
We're charging?
Yes, they're hooked to our system. So we, what we do now is we read the water meters twice. We, we determine our wastewater rates by how much water is used. Both of these have one bathroom in each place, the water usage is very low and so what we get for wastewater is pretty low. What drove this, quite honestly, is there is another property that has a failed septic that wanted to hook up to this. Well, they're not really set up to do that with where it's at right now. So as we move forward, again, as we move forward, as we look to the future, it makes sense for us to take this over now and then we look at the other properties that move forward. And to your question, probably would address that a little differently. Wilson does not go through now. I have no idea what that might look like as that develops to the east. So it could be that the sewer line would run through that way. I, that has not been designed or really looked at that hard yet.
I really think my question was just, are we, are we acquiring to the end of the line?
But yes, we are.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
There's not an additional?
Nothing would be left private at that point in time.
And so Dennis, other people could hook up, like beyond this person that had a failed septic, but in the future, you're saying that other people could hook up into this as we develop that direction?
In the, in the future, yes. And, and what we would likely do is, we would run a main down Bennett Road. And so the three or four properties that then go out toward 68 to the south would hook up to this line. We've already had a request from the visitor's center and we've tried to look at ways to hook up, to hook them up to, to the sewer. But they are far enough to the east that the cost is kind of prohibitive. This would allow the visitor's center to hook up also.
If, if I may, Mayor, Commissioners. Richard Neistat, City Manager, just a little bit of experience from other communities. It's not unusual to have private water lines or private sanitary sewer lines and lift stations in communities for a variety of reasons. And every community I've been in, as the community grows and a break happens in a private line, the city generally winds up fixing that because the owners of the private line can't do it anymore or nobody ever remembers that. In this particular case, the owners have been maintaining the line. And in almost all those other cases in any other community, we went ahead and acquired those lines just to make sure that it was maintained properly and, and everybody understood it was part of the city's grid.
Other questions that you may have for Director Tharp regarding this request? This is the first time we have seen this request. Commissioners, is there, I probably should ask Director Tharp, is there, is this time sensitive in which you need to see movement on this?
It is not real time sensitive. I've been in contact, contact with the property owner that is looking to hook up. And they are anxious to move forward. I think all we really need to know is that we are going to move forward at some point in time, whether we want, and that, that does not mean say that we'll move forward, but if you want to move this to another meeting, we can certainly do that.
What is the word of the commission regarding this item?
Well, I, I think it makes sense to do it. I've not looked at the contract, it's been reviewed by our attorney, so.
Mr. Tharp, when you say it's not time sensitive, I mean, if we didn't, if we pass it on to another week, we're looking at roughly three weeks before we'd have another meeting where we could approve it. Am I right there? So I mean, is that still okay?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I believe this could be approved in a study session and not have to go to a regular meeting.
Well, it, it could be approved in the study session, but as your manager, I don't like having you make decisions. It's up to you when you make a decision. But I think in the interest of transparency, decisions like this ought to be made at a regular stated meeting. But it's up to you, however you want to.
So that would be like November 30th, if we saw it next Monday night, Monday. And I'd be looking at it one more week.
One of the Commissioners won't be here on the 3rd. Maybe two of them won't be because of the vacancy we have.
I'll, I'll be here on the 3rd, I know.
I think we're going to be okay.
In my, in my mind, if it's not that time sensitive, I'd be okay with waiting till, you know, put it on another meeting, talk, you know, for a discussion and then possibly put it on our November 3rd meeting.
Sounds good.
I think we'll hold it over for another week.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you, Director Tharp, we appreciate it. Hey, hello. That moves us on to reports by our city commissioner, or city manager, sorry, city manager.
Richard Neistat, City Manager, I have three items. I'm going to give you an update on the Legacy Square homeless situation, just so you and the public know that, that is on our radar. I've asked, when I get done, I've asked our Director of Finance, give you a short report on where we're at reviewing ARPA funds. And then I'd also like the Community Development Director and the City Attorney to talk to you about the AEO grant, which I notified you of today, AEO loan, which I notified of you today. So first thing I'd, I'd like you and the public to know is that we're aware of the homelessness situation over at Legacy Square. And what I've been working with is one of our social service agencies, plus making visits down to the square periodically throughout the week, and actually talking to our, to our people, and they are our people, because here's what, here's what the public ought to understand. These are our neighbors, these are our parents, these are our sisters and brothers, these can be any family member or friend, you name it. One day, they can be in a different position in life that none of us want to be in. Now, all the arguments, why are they there, they're there of their own doing, is that, all those things do come into play. But the point is, it is a, it is a, it is an issue that you deal with, with public. So what I've tried to do is convey that we understand that people may come down there, but, but the overriding issue is that we don't need people using profane language. There's no reason why people can't pick up their trash. And we don't need people laying in front of restrooms, because that does prohibit others from going and using that facility that we raised private, that we're, private funds were raised for and taxpayers pay on the restrooms. So in order to get that message across, the showers are no longer open except by special request when a function happens. We've turned off the electricity to the outside outlets on the restroom. Um, we've turned off the electricity to the outside outlets on the restroom. And, uh, as I said, I've engaged them, uh, engaged people in a discussion out there. Uh, for example, one of them apparently does odd jobs, but doesn't have an ID. So I just happened to be over there one day when one of our, uh, social service agency representatives were there, and, uh, she wanted to talk to this person, and I went with her. Um, and, uh, so she asked a number of questions, uh, and here's how you do this, here's, here's how we can help you. And I've, uh, uh, this particular social service agency is actually, um, partnering with the city in the sense that, um, in the next thirty days, uh, we're probably, um, they, they will have some space uh, in the, in City Hall where people can come by and work with the social service agency and see if their needs can be addressed. And, uh, so that they have a better life than sleeping on our benches or sleeping on concrete or that. So, um, the important thing is, we're not solving this problem. Uh, we're just, we're just trying to address, I'm trying to address a very narrow part of the problem that could, uh, of the situation that could still have a large impact upon the homeless population we have. We're not solving homelessness. That's actually beyond our capability, I believe. But hopefully, our community knows that we are addressing it. Hopefully, we'll see the churches get more involved. Hopefully, we'll see other groups get more involved and, um, actually, uh, be helpful in trying to at least help some of our homeless. So that's all I have to say about that. Any questions?
Uh, Richard, you mentioned getting the church community involved, like the Ministry Alliance, have you been able to contact anybody there or any response yet?
I, I have not. Commissioner, I have to be honest, I'm just kind of focused on the social service agency to try and, try and get this taken care of.
Okay, maybe I could make, make that contact, so I, I just didn't want to double up if you already have, so, yeah, okay, good, thanks.
They may be contacted already.
Oh, that's right, that's right, this is all public.
Yeah.
Good point.
Next item on our ear.
Um, Melanie.
Thank you so much, can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you so much for being here. What do you have to tell us about ARPA funds? And you know what, maybe we should just start out by saying, what are ARPA funds?
Hey, that's a really great lead-in, I actually made a note to make sure that we talked about that publicly. Uh, so this is part of the American Recovery Plan Act, um, that came out earlier this year. And the portion of that act that's related to, um, cities, counties, and state government is only a very, very small portion of that entire act. But every community of most bank communities are receiving dollars out of this, and the city of Ottawa's amount that we will be receiving total, um, is just around one point eight six million dollars. Uh, we have received already our first half of that, so just shy of nine hundred and thirty thousand. The second portion of that should be coming to us in July of next year. And the portion of the act that's related to us, we're considered a non-entitlement unit, um, which just means we're a city smaller than, uh, fifty thousand. And so some of the components for what we can use the dollars for, or what they were intended for is, um, supporting ongoing, um, response efforts for COVID-nineteen, revenue replacement, economic stabilization, uh, which also includes the infrastructure component, and then also addressing challenges for certain populations within the community. So while those sound fairly specific, the parameters around each one of them are somewhat broad, um, with some, um, a lot of language, uh, that needs to be read through to determine whether or not, um, it is something that, like each project or each item purchased, um, actually qualifies under the act. So, um, a small, uh, group of us, as EPCD staff, have been working on this and, uh, getting some training from the Office of Recovery, um, from some larger organizations across the country that are giving, um, out as much information as they can, participated in some conversations with other municipalities, other counties, to try and figure out how they're intending to use the funds. I don't know that anyone has made, um, a hundred percent decision on every, um, dollar that they're, how they're going to use every dollar. Some communities have, um, made decisions and have already started moving in the direction of spending the dollars, but many of them have not. Um, initially, the, the conversation was, um, take a slow, uh, look at this process, make sure that you're getting the best, um, use of these dollars for your community. So that's where we are right now, and our staff, um, is putting together a group for you to consider. And I believe that we've even mentioned in a previous meeting that we might want to do something to involve the community. Now, we haven't, uh, decided exactly what the best method would be to involve the community in these discussions. Um, so more to come on that later. And, uh, we did, our timeline is that these funds need to be committed by December of twenty twenty-four, but those projects, um, if they're projects, don't need to be committed or, um, completed, I'm sorry, until December of twenty twenty-six. So we do have some time to make the right decision, uh, make sure that we have, um, impacted as much of our community as we can, and that's, that's our goal right now. And what we're putting together for you to consider at some future point, we're thinking possibly in November, um, later in November, we'd be able to bring something back to you.
Awesome. Questions for Ms. Landis regarding ARPA funds? Thank you for that very broad overview, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, something else that you have on your report?
I do, I'd, um, I'd like, uh, Mrs. Lee and City Attorney Finch to talk about the AEO loan request.
Uh, sorry for the late notice on this one, um, was so busy with the TIF projects, I failed to pass this through. When, when it first came through and the committee reviewed it, it was, it was while you were at lead conference, and so it just kind of slipped off my list. Um, for the last several months, in fact, gosh, probably even six months ago, I sent a report up to the American Eagle, uh, Outfitters Foundation to kind of let them know that we had loaned out some funds, but that we still had funds available. And, um, after some consultation in-house, there was a sense that we could alter how we had originally anticipated the direction of these funds going. Um, and so I've been, I've had two different businesses that have been talking to me about doing a borrowing. And, um, the first one that has actually submitted an application is Johnson Lawn Care LLC. And I suggested to them that they tell us the amount that they wanted to ask and for what term, um, for our review committee to consider, um, that. And so the request was, um, for ten thousand dollars, uh, the purpose of which was to purchase equipment so that they could, uh, quit renting equipment, um, and be able to be more efficient in, in the lawn care function. They would retain one full-time job and two part-time job. The term they asked for was three years. You recall, before, we had eighteen months. Um, and they asked for zero percent interest for the first six months, and then two percent for the fall until the rest is paid in full. So the, the schedule that we created for them was, um, making payments beginning within a month, just not paying interest on the first six months. Um, it's not a lot of dollars, but every little bit when they're first starting out was the goal. So the review committee made that recommendation. Um, just to be clear, the funds we have on hand today, and I should have said that before, is just over thirty thousand. Um, we had three loans. Um, we're working with those, those, uh, folks that have loans to make sure that they're making payments, even if not according to the original schedule. Um, they've all had difficulty with that. Uh, so, uh, I don't know if City Attorney wants to make any other comment at this point.
Commissioners, I would, I would only add that it's, these are loans within your discretion. You can decide on terms, uh, and all of that, that traditionally, when the city has done, um, and utilized revolving loan funds, uh, they've been tied to job retention or creation, which is listed here in the memo. Uh, and they've typically been kind of lenders of last resort. Um, so, uh, you're dealing with maybe some higher risk situations, you're, you're dealing with, uh, gap financing. Maybe they've gotten some, uh, loans through traditional sources, banks or credit unions, but need a little bit more, uh, to make some sort of down payment. So one of the things that we have traditionally not done is tried to securitize those loans against collateral, uh, because of the, uh, the nature of, of how difficult that is. Typically, there's a lender in front of you. Um, and in this case, the question has arisen internally about whether you want us to try to secure this loan against collateral since it's a capital improvement loan. Um, those of you who work in the banking industry know how hard it is to chase collateral of that sort. I assume this is a lawn care business, this is probably mowers, weed eaters, trimmers, that sort of thing. Um, but, uh, we certainly can do that, it's going to take some amendment to the forms that we have traditionally used for these things because they've typically been unsecured loans. Um, and, uh, and so would appreciate any guidance or input that you have on that, uh, to direct us so that we can make sure that we are doing what it is you want us to do, whether we continue kind of what we've done in the past, not securing these loans, uh, whether you want us to try to, to step in and do that in certain instances. Um, again, out of a sense of equity, I would say, you know, whatever you want us to do, understand we, we think we ought to do with all of the loans that come before us. Uh, but most of them don't offer much of an opportunity for security that, that's actually enforceable.
When the, uh, what, what has changed in the way of American Eagle looks at what the money could be used for, or did, was there any change?
There wasn't really, they were very generic initially. We kind of, um, shaded that to kind of create sort of the folks that weren't eligible for our other funds, that this would be a backup to that. Um, and since we've exhausted all those other funds and no longer have our own revolving loan account, zero, which we, we've had since the seventies, um, kind of felt like this might be a place to, to do small loans in that, in that, uh, gap, if you will. Um, but when we had that internal conversation, uh, the city attorney was, was really clear that he didn't think they had any concerns. And I did let them know that we were probably going to broaden the initial program that we offered.
You know, I've had some experience, you, you know what it was, a tax, uh, increment, no, tax, uh, credit thing we did with Commerce for that same kind of loaning, lending, and it was an awful experience as far as getting payback. Uh, we had one major good loan, that was a good loan. But when you dole out five thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand, unsecured, uh, and you don't monitor it very closely, like, they buy the stuff they say they're gonna buy, and you see it before you pay for it. Uh, it's, you're just throwing it down the drain, kind of. But, um, you know, it's, I always thought it was worth a chance, but, uh, my, uh, I was always optimistic, but I, I was, shouldn't have been, because it was not, uh, a retrievable loan, is, is, is a short way to say it, I guess.
I did offer to the applicant that there could be a condition that they had to provide an invoice, for example, so that we knew that.
I think that'd be a good thing.
But typically with these, in the past, all we've done is write a check once the loan's approved.
Did American Eagle request any kind of, um, I mean, they, they, they loaned the money, are, are they, they're expecting to get fifty thousand dollars paid back eventually?
No, 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 it, it was a gift to us, and, that's right.
So they're not requiring any kind of? Okay.
Can you, um, Mrs. Lee, can you tell me about the, um, the terms of, uh, the payback for the other two loans that you have approved? Are they at both at zero percent, or where, where are we at on?
The other three loans each had a little portion of time that was at zero percent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, all three sets of terms were just a little bit different.
Um, but every loan has been offered a zero percent, um?
For a certain period of time, yes, ma'am.
Period of time, and then there is a, a percentage afterwards.
Two percent if they, yes, once.
Okay. So th- these terms that were requested were not out of the ordinary for the other ones that we had done either?
No, just the length, it would, from eighteen months with the previous loans to thirty-six months. And two of the previous loans were for five thousand dollars and one was for eleven thousand and some change.
And they've been, currently, they've paid?
Uh, no, they're, none of them are fully current. But we've had payments, you can see that we're.
Yeah.
The question I have is on, on, since this lawn mowing business, and most lawn mowings about done for the year, will he be able to meet his debt service comfortably, or is he gonna have a source of funding, like snow removal or something else?
I can answer that question.
Okay.
I did send the schedule, and it's also entirely possible that he won't ask for the funds, I mean, once he knew he's approved.
Oh, not right away?
We could have a conversation about, at what point does he really want to draw them.
I got you, okay.
And that, that parts of the terms, when I sent the agreements to the city attorney, I put in some anticipated, but we haven't. That, that part would be when he wants to draw.
Okay.
And, and they can, I guess, without any real rules, but they can use it for operating funds to survive the winter until he can buy a lawn mower?
Um, so, all of our things actually don't get that specific. In fact, the other application is more operating. In fact, every one of them up to now has been operating. This is the first one that's talked about a capital. This is more like the old-fashioned revolving. All the rest have been operating.
Um, Mrs. Lee, do you want to see movement on this today, or, or how is it that you would like to, um, the applicant? Is the applicant looking for a rapid turnaround, or?
Uh, the applicant's been already waiting. In the past, we've just come to you whenever it was over five thousand. If you want some more time to think about that, certainly, we're talking about some terms that might be different, that's fine. If you want to keep it on as other business, even Wednesday, that's fine, but if you want to do it next week.
Your review committee is recommending?
The committee has met and recommends, yes.
This is a locally owned business?
Yes.
Commissioners, what, uh, is the will of the Commission regarding this particular request?
I think the review committee knows more than we do at this time. Uh, I would recommend that we accept their recommendation.
I, I would be okay with accepting this applicant's, uh, here. Um, we're talking about, just as Commissioner Skidmore talked about, that we're getting to the end of the mowing season, too. So any kind of funds that they could bring in are limited with the time that we have right now. So, uh, they could certainly, you know, start recouping it right away. So I'd be okay with pushing it forward today.
Be a good time to, um, buy a mower at discount and use the extra money to buy a snow blower.
I'm fine with that, too.
Um, is there consensus to, actually, I, I think we'll probably need, do you want, uh, would you like a vote on this one? Yes, oh, sorry, City Manager, or City Attorney?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, don't want to draw this out, but the, the question I have is because it affects the documents. Do you want us to attempt to secure against the collateral? Do you want us to attempt to get a personal guarantee since this is an LLC? Are there things that, that you want us to try to do to increase the potential for recovery?
In, in my opinion, I, I do not. Um, I look at it as American Eagle made the, the donation of fifty thousand dollars, you know, a while back, did not, uh, look to get it, recoup it anyway. Um, it, it even says in here to support businesses through the pandemic earlier this year, and we knew a lot of those didn't survive. So they probably did not foresee getting that money back. I know, as the bankers over there are probably cringing about, hey, I need my money back, I just, I don't, I didn't see it. In my initial thinking, when this came in last year, it was kind of given to the city to give away, and that's, that's kind of how I feel.
I'd, I'd like to see somehow, and it's, I'd like to see the mower purchased, and rather than just the check issued, I'd like to have some kind of a receipt. Uh, and I know you can't write a check without funds, but there's some way to do that, it seems to me like.
Well, we most assuredly want to ensure that the money is going for what is on the loan application. And there might be, well. I'm confident that we can do that up to a cer- a certain limit.
I respect what Mayor Prothean Crowley is saying, but I also, just on the flip side, I also want, um, would like to make sure that, um, uh, we don't just give it away, but we have capacity to continue to give, um, opportunities to our local businesses um, so that they can, um, not only survive but thrive. And so, um, I don't know how that looks, but, um, I certainly would like to see, to make sure that the, um, items that they are, that they are, they're capital improvement, that they're requesting, um, money for is actually purchased. Um, and so I don't know how that looks or how that can be structured, but, uh, certainly want to make sure that that happens. So.
The committee could write the check to the landlord?
Yeah, I mean, just to clarify, we can, we can certainly ask for a receipt or that, that sort of thing. That's not the same as securing the loan. Um, and I think perhaps maybe rather than, you've indicated you want to do something less than collateral. than collateralizing and UCC ones and in the ability to repossess the mowers. Maybe just since we're dealing with an LLC, a reasonable middle ground might be a personal guarantee from the owners of the company, so they can't just go shut down the LLC later and, and take the mower. And I'm not suggesting this, these owners would do that. I'm just saying that if you're making a loan, you want at least some guarantee that entities, corporate entities in particular, can just be, you know, shut down or not maintained. And so I would maybe suggest to the commission, as a reasonable middle ground, you look at just asking for a personal guarantee from the owners of the company and some proof of purchase of, of the items to satisfy those.
What does a personal guarantee look like?
It's, it's an attachment to the promissory note and loan agreement that just says if, if the company, if the LLC does not make the payments, you can look to those people personally to make those payments. They're guaranteeing payment and are personally liable if the LLC fails to make the payments.
Wendy, was this for just a mower, or was this actually for income?
They indicated mower, but I haven't seen a price, so it's.
So, sorry, so we could actually ask for them to just bring the invoice for the mower and write it directly, write the check directly so that we know that the mower's purchased?
Yes, if that's what you would like us to do.
Wendy, that sounds like a concern, that everybody's worried about whether it's getting purchased or not. We know for sure at that point it is.
Yeah, we want to make sure it's, it's not right now, but it's a loan.
And if it's not, I mean, if there's a difficulty with this, we'll be glad to bring it back and let you talk about it.
You know, it seems like that maybe what we need to do is just really think more about this for a little bit, because it seems like we have several questions that are not being answered here. And so possibly, I know this came to us late in the hour on, on, on Monday afternoon. And so really, I think the best thing for us to do is to give this a little bit of time to think about it and come back and meet on this next week. So we'll put it on our agenda for next week.
Sounds good.
What else do you have for City Manager Neinstedt?
Commissioners, I have nothing else.
Okay. That moves us on to reports by our city commissioners. Mayor Protem Crowley?
I want to start off by saying thank you and good job to Public Works. The streets look good, the markings, and then the parking lot also. I was able to park in a spot today. Normally I'm in the middle and people always yell at me for parking in the wrong spot, so. Looks good. And then just remind everybody, the early voting starts, started today at the courthouse, so we've got two weeks to get it in. That's it.
Okay, and Commissioner Wagen?
I just want to say I like the way Richard's been handling the situation on Legacy Square and keeping up to date and working with the other organizations, so thank you very much for that. Other than that, I have to leave.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Well, I thank the public and all those sponsors for the public forum last Thursday night, and our own mayor taking the questions as well, and our previous Commissioner Jorgensen asking the questions. So that was a nice surprise to see everybody, familiar faces up there. But it was a good turnout, I'm glad to see you was having that. I think every vote should be an informed vote, and this is one way to do it, to hear the issues before the commissioners and before the school board members. So thank you all for making that happen, and I think it was a good thing, and we'll see what turns.
All right, perfect, thank you. That moves us on to reports by the mayor. I have none at this time. Do want to move on to announcements. October 20th, we have our regular meeting at 10:00 AM at City Hall, followed by joint county, city, school board luncheon at USD 290. And then we have a study session on the 25th at 4:00 PM. If there's nothing else to be brought before the city commission today, we will adjourn today's meeting.